Well, call to order the Beale Early Childhood Center Building Committee for Monday, April 30th, 2018. No minutes this evening, no minutes for this evening. We have no warrants as well, correct?
Correct.
We will hear reports, review, and act on the following matters. A report from the owner's project manager. Project schedule?
Project schedule is on track, on schedule.
Financials haven't changed since?
Haven't changed since last Thursday.
Okay, so the follow-up that we asked Paul to do from last week was to take a look at that trend box, if you will, of as you project out likely inflation within construction costs. And we can now ask Paul to walk through some of the findings that he further fleshed out for us.
Yeah, well, we have, this is the same sheet that I showed you last time, except there were some blank cells. There are 13 projects, other than Beale project, which I've listed twice, one as CM at risk, one as designed bid build. So there were 13 projects. Out of those 13, I was able to find out the delivery method for eight of them. Some of them are still be to be determined because it's still in the design phase. But out of those eight, I was able to determine half of them would go CM at risk, the other half would go in designed bid build. And as we mentioned, this is a range of pricing that we've seen, and without any adjustments for inflation, they're at the points and times when the, for the forecasted bid date, that's on the far right-hand column of this spreadsheet, on the right-hand side. But I did research further. If you go to the next page, don't get scared, because this is just to show you, there's a big spreadsheet on the MSBA's website. It's a two-page spreadsheet that shows the 38 projects currently in construction. It tells you whether it's delivered with the project delivery, which product delivery method, construction management or designed bid build. I have a summary coming up. There's 38 projects, and it has all the different dollar values. And also, the MSBA provides information on, if you keep on going to it, there's a bar chart with some orange bars and some blue bars on it. This is, these are, these next two pages are the MSBA's current schedule for bids in the remainder of 2018 and early 2019. There are 14 projects there in queue, and the orange bars are the ones that are scheduled to go CM at risk, and the blue bars are the ones that are scheduled to go designed bid build. And it's predominantly this coming batch of projects is predominantly CM at risk. And there are a lot of large dollar value projects that are over $100 million that are very well suited for CM at risk. But then there's also some other ones in the 60s that are also good candidates. If you go now one page further past the second schedule sheet, I have a summary of what we just looked at. The page looks like this. So I have project delivery method, the box up top, what's currently under construction. We have 18 designed bid build contracts and 20 CM at risk contracts for a total of 38 contracts presently at some point in the construction phase. And the total project value of the designed bid build is 700, approximately 700,000 and 700 million, and the ones under, the 20 under CM at risk are 1.3 billion. But the, on the right-hand column, I have the average project value. I took the total contract, some of the total subcontract, the total sum of the contract values divided by the number of contracts. So we have designed bid build averaging $40 million, 40.2 million, and CM at risk, the 20 CM at risk averaging 67.04. So you can see, there's a, the larger the dollar value of the project, the more likely it's, it will go CM at risk. And because it's a larger dollar value, project is more generally more complicated or just more on the line with respect to risk. So those tend to, the higher the dollar value, the more likely it's likely to go CM at risk. But also, schedule critical jobs, jobs where you want to have early packages, and those are also good candidates for CM at risk regardless of the dollar value. And now, the bottom one, other, just what's currently, we currently know to be scheduled for 2018 and 2019, and this is heavily skewed towards CM at risk. And regardless of whether you're doing designed bid build, the three of designed bid build are averaging 88.9 million dollars for each of the three contracts, and CM at risk are averaging 96. So it's a, it's a lot of big contracts coming out. But, so we can see that, you know, I think maybe it's a bit of an aberration going forward the next 12 months because of all the large dollar value jobs. But looking backwards over what's currently under construction, it's still, over 50% of the contracts and probably 2/3 of the contract dollars go with the construction delivery, construction management at risk method. Any questions thus far? And, you know, with respect to the, next few pages are just a summary of the presentation we provided back on February 13th. We talked about the advantages and disadvantages of the designed bid build method. I won't read through each one of these, but this is the highlights of those slides that we sent out last Thursday to refresh everybody's memory. The first page is a description of the two methods. The next page has the advantages and disadvantages of CM at risk. It has a yellow box on it. And designed bid build generally has a reputation of being the lowest price upfront. And CM at risk allows you to select based upon qualifications. You select the contractor you want to work with based upon qualifications, and the contract, the CM firm comes on early as an advisor during the design phase and does constructability reviews and construction cost estimates that are performed by a firm that actually does estimating for their livelihood, because that determines how they bid on jobs. And as I said, the bottom, the bottom of each of those, the left side, designed bid build, best suited for less complicated projects, and they're not necessarily schedule sensitive. But CM at risk is good for ones that are time-sensitive, challenging, or subject to changes. And sometimes you have projects that require high oversight. You get a lot more high oversight in the field during construction with CM at risk. And the next page just goes on to some more advantages and disadvantages, and I'll pause one second, and people can ask any questions they have about any particular advantages or disadvantages they might have thought about. Any thoughts at this point? And PMA has experience with both methods, and as is the architect, Limo Pagano. But we work to keep this, the CM at risk approach, it's known for its transparency, and we work to make sure, represent the owner's interest in what, and the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, is a proposal that comes in, and that gets, can be negotiated with the contractor. So you get to see every dollar. And there are holds and allowances and guaranteed maximum price contingencies that are built into that GMP we've talked about before. But any of those that are unused get returned to the owner. And I want to talk about that a little bit more, as an example of that. I want, a few slides ahead, I have some examples, an example of the Shrewsbury Public Library that was delivered with CM at risk. But before we go there, we have this CM at risk procurement schedule. I have the, on this page here, with the green and blue bars on it, that's a bar chart schedule. The green items are construction, the green items are design activities and milestones of delivering the schematic design. The next phase of design is the schematic design, and you can see that goes from May through mid-September. And whichever way, if the committee decides to go with the CM at risk method, the blue activities in the bottom are, we have to apply to the Office of Inspector General to get approval for the town of Shrewsbury to use CM at risk. But it's rather a formality, because the town's been approved twice before, and I wouldn't envision any problems there at all. But, and the next page, I've got--
Can I just go back to one point you raised?
Yes, please, yes.
Regardless of, you made a comment about you get to see where the money's going, and you get to see what you're paying for. Regardless of the two, you get to see what's in the requisition and what they're requesting you to do.
Exactly, exactly. So the contractor provides a lump, the general contractor with the designed bid build method, he provides a lump sum bid.
Yeah.
And then they break it down to a schedule of values with all their subcontractors and the, and all the non-subcontract work.
Someone could have heard your comment, though, and thought, under one method, you get to review the detail, under the other method, you don't see the detail. I just want to make sure it's clear.
Right, yeah, exactly.
That you get to see the detail regardless.
You get to see the detail regardless. And the subtlety would be, but you also get to negotiate a portion of it with the CM at risk, where you don't with the designed bid build contractor. But yes, that's absolutely true. And I have, as a refresher, I have the pros and cons list here, just to refresh people's memories. But the next page here has a color picture of the library on the left side and the outline of the guaranteed maximum price. But you can see here, the guaranteed maximum price for the library was $16,720,000, and the bulk of it are the top 16 or so items that are all subcontract, subcontracted work. And a lot, what we've been talking about up till now, in previous weeks, previous meetings, were how we establish a project budget. And we established a project budget assuming CM at risk delivery method, and another project budget assuming designed bid build. And we said, well, estimators at this phase typically require, they budget more for CM at risk, and it seemed kind of nebulous. Where's that extra money coming from? Are you just buying a Lexus when you could buy a high-end Toyota and be just as happy? Well, what you're really getting is, with CM at risk, you're getting the higher-end supervision. You should, you should end up with close to the same project, but if you could get a, you're probably going to get a little bit higher quality with the CM at risk approach, but you're still going to get an acceptable project with the designed bid build. But with respect to the numbers, every bid of that guaranteed maximum price is detailed. And yes, the designed bid build contractor will provide similar detail, but, you know, you don't know exactly what's in his bid, whereas the CM at risk, you know, what the general contractor will do is, they'll all add up to the lump sum price, but sometimes they like to try to play some games and try to front-end load stuff with the early work. They'll try to put extra money into, so they get a little ahead on their cash flow.
But regarding what you're paying for, if you put a good set of specs out there, you know you're getting this pen.
Right.
Or a light that you have to approve.
Right, right. So I think you would get, regardless of the approach, there's detailed specifications, and we expect to make sure the job is built to that specification. And if you get a good general contractor, things can go pretty smoothly. But in the instances where you don't get a good, as good of a general contractor, sometimes you still get what you bargained for, but it takes a little bit extra work of influencing the contractor to perform in accordance with his contract terms and conditions. But so anyway, we have two different, in the Shrewsbury Public Library, we had two different types of subcontractors. One is state-mandated, what they call filed subbidders that are, that get bid out separately. And then the other ones are non-filed subbidders, and the CM at risk firm generally will pick from a pool of qualified people they're experienced with. And some CMs will have more competition than others for this, but there's the full transparency for each of those non-filed subbid subcontractors. The general, the CM will actually produce the bid tabs. He say, okay, I solicited four bids for this, and I recommend this one be the, low bidder be selected. So it provides full transparency, allows the building committee to see where the money's being spent and to approve the recommendations to award for the various subcontracts. And so there's full understanding and full transparency of where that full construction management fee is, general guarantee maximum price is coming from. And that, even the items like general conditions and CM fee, CM fee could be negotiated. You can have general conditions, things like snow removal and dumpsters, and you can actually put an allowance in there, and you only pay for what you use for. So as we talked about, the guaranteed maximum price will be the most you would pay, and it can come down a little bit. Questions thus far? I'll turn to the next page, the back page of this handout. I've just reiterated the various summary of the guaranteed maximum price for the Shrewsbury Public Library project. And on the left side, that spreadsheet, on the lower right-hand corner of that left-hand side spreadsheet, we have the $16.72 million guaranteed maximum price. And as a summary, I've kind of looked over the right-hand side, we have the original GMP, that same value that was on the lower right-hand corner of the spreadsheet on the left is now on the upper right-hand corner on the spreadsheet at the right, and that's the guaranteed maximum price. On the Shrewsbury Public Library, we had $695,000 of change orders that we mutually agreed would be beneficial to the project. But we had a return of unexpended allowances and GMP contingency in the amount of 1.1 million dollars. So there was a net deduct. So the finish, the end-of-the-day price to that CM firm was $16 million, $16,270,000. So quite a bit lower than the original guaranteed maximum price, $450,000 under run. So this is where I was talking about previously, how the guaranteed maximum price is the upfront price, and generally, you have a different price at the end of the day that's lower. So some of the, that, what we, the estimators will talk about, a CM at risk premium is a bit overstated, because you get some of that back. And in addition to the returns on the unused contingencies by the CM firm, the owners have, we had a high, we had a high owner's construction contingency of 8%, because it was an ad-reno project. But we only used 695,000. So in addition to having under running on the, on the, what was paid to the CM, the owner's budget for change orders was only spent half of that. So another 600, nearly 700,000 dollars was, that was budgeted for was not spent. So we had a total in the Shrewsbury Public Library of 1.1 million dollars of construction costs that was budgeted and not spent. Questions?
Paul, just to look at the, that final page there. Am I reading it right, that the change orders are the same for both the CM at risk and the owner? Meaning, did they just have a sum and they split the cost?
No, no. The, a change order is something that wasn't bargained for in the bid. So that's why the owner has what they call construction, owner's construction contingency to pay, to fund change orders. So we had, the original change order amount was 1.32. It was drawn down by the exact amount of those change orders.
Okay.
So that's how, that's how those two numbers are the same. And so, but we only used half of what was budgeted for, because it was just a good set of documents, and you had well-developed and well-bought-out jobs. You know, when you have, all the scope of work accounted for in the guaranteed maximum price, there's less potential for change orders as well. Any other questions?
I have a few comments.
Yeah?
The construction contract under run of $450,000 represents 2.7% of the contract cost.
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't call those huge savings.
No.
When we typically budget that the CM at risk project is going to be 5% to 10% more. So I don't really see the value in that. I've worked on CM projects as a subcontractor. And as the initial bid packages for concrete and steel are coming in, if you're picking up savings there, now it's time to spend money. And I think CM projects, the end result tends to be something which matches your budget as opposed to matching your needs.
Interesting observation.
Absolutely. Saw that on a pharmaceutical job, that we were doing all the water treatment. And, you know, next thing you know, there's granite countertops going into the water treatment lab when it was, you know, it was, any of the savings you may experience will be gobbled up by the people who will be using that building after.
Well, if, well, that's, it could be, and the building committee has the control over any added scope. If somebody wants to substitute one material that's specified in the, in the contract documents for a more expensive material, that has to be brought forward as a, as a proposal for the committee to review. And I do understand what you're saying, that some owners can see that as money, that under run in the early bids is money, slush fund to try to make other things better. But the town of Shrewsbury with the Sherwood Middle School and the Shrewsbury Library resisted that temptation that other owners aren't able to.
Well, this method was used at the library for a variety of reasons, but my recollection, Bob, I think you served on that as well, one of the primary drivers was that you were weaving a new building into an old building.
It was a very complex project.
Yeah, the complexity, the complexity of it was the reason we picked it.
Exactly.
That, and the fact that we had good luck with it over at Sherwood. And the quality, we do find, is higher. I think you're--
I'm going to take very much umbrage to that, because you know that we've done a few projects--
There's always an exception to the rule.
--that senior centers still looks like the day it was finished. That was a tight specification, and we were held to. This town has had some success, and I'm not just saying with Massey Aller Construction, I'm saying this town has had some success with firm bid projects.
They always had some tough times, too.
Oh.
Oak was a miserable job.
You had a contractor go bankrupt in a fraudulent bonding company.
The high school was a tougher state.
Yeah.
And I think it suffered due to some of the quality that we put that. It was just like we had to beat everything out of them.
Well--
Yeah. My practice provide you with that experience.
That's right.
Others don't.
And others don't. That's exactly right.
But I think upfront, we can pre-qualify general bidders.
To, you can pre-qualify them, and sometimes you can disqualify some, prevent them from bidding, and--
Right.
You know, not all--
That's easier to do now than it used to be.
One of the challenges we face, that of course Sherwood didn't, is that we're at the high end of the market. So there's a fear that I have, that the good guy is a busy. And maybe the second tier is available, and let's hope the third tier isn't. But again, we don't know that until we actually go out there and start doing it. Sandy?
Paul, maybe you could talk to, you know, picking a contractor based on, you know, the CM at risk is based on qualifications and fee versus the lowest bid. You know, think about when you do it as a homeowner, you may not always want the lowest bid.
Well, you're absolutely right. I mean, when you do designed bid build, it's whoever comes in, takes a set of plans, puts in a price, if it's low, you have a tough time refusing. As John said, you can go through a pre-qualification process. If you try to disqualify someone, you've got to have good substantial reason. Well, you'll, they'll be on the party--
Levitation.
And it could cost time. So usually, you don't do that, because it just hasn't worked well for us. But in the other scope with the CM at risk, to put it in Mike Pagano's words, you're dining with a five-star menu. So you could take any one of them and probably come out with a, you know, with a real good product. That's what we found.
Fire stations, they were done under the traditional?
That was just designed bid build, traditional.
Okay. Was CM at risk even available then?
No.
Okay.
And we had--
Just 2004, right? Just got put in 2004.
Right.
Yeah, it's relatively new.
Yes.
With the size of that project, you probably wouldn't have done it.
What I often will tell people, my experience was simultaneously with the Sherwood Middle School being constructed under CM at risk, we had a comparable-sized project in Boylston, the Tohhto Regional Middle School, High School being built, and that was designed bid build. The contractor left a million dollars on the table to the next highest bidder, and from the very get-go, was trying to help save some money. And so they, and they ultimately successfully built the job, but there was, that method, there was a little, there was less site staffing on that project than we had down in Sherwood Middle School. So that might be, you know, a stark example, but there were, there was almost two projects going on. We had one project where we're managing the work in the field, and the other one, we're kind of writing some letters, stern contractual letters advising the contractor of the need to meet the schedule and stay on, stay on track. But that's, we've done that on a number of other projects as well, not just singling out the one project in Boylston. We have another contract, and several other contracts, where sometimes you get a good designed bid build and things go smoothly, other times it's more of a struggle. But at the end of the day, you will get the project you bargained for. One might have a lot more punchless items at the very end of the job to resolve, but that's something your architect and OPM will work and do. You might have a couple thousand punchless items instead of a few hundred. But again, the other thing I think that we, we've experienced on the Shrewsbury Public Library and the Sherwood Middle School, that it was, it's nice, whether it's worth the money is for this committee to decide. But you have an architect and an OPM who had, up to this point, have had a good track record of earnestly representing the interests of the town of Shrewsbury. And each of those projects, the library and the Sherwood Middle School, we had a professional contractor who was also earnestly interested in the success of the project, maybe to a higher degree than the designed bid build contractor. Because the CM at risk firm, because you negotiate and select based upon qualifications, their references mean a lot. So each of those two contractors we had, one for the Sherwood Middle School and one for the library, were working hard to earn a good recommendation for their next job. Whereas a designed bid build, as long as they're not bad enough to get disqualified, they'll get their next job as long as they're a low bidder. So I felt it was, it's a, it was a nice thing to have for the owners to have, every building committee meeting, to have the architect, OPM, and CM firm come to the building committee. And if there was problems, they would come with a problem and a solution. You don't often, in a designed bid build, usually you won't even see the general contractor at a building committee meeting unless you want to, you know, bring him in to read him the terms and conditions of the contract and give some strong encouragement to get back on track. And anyway, those were just a couple of other things, you know, firsthand stories that helped make, to highlight the differences in the two methods.
Further questions, comments?
Paul, do you want to talk a little bit about the schedule implications specific to Beale?
Yeah, I think if, you know, we've been targeting this project, if we, from the very beginning, we've been thinking, well, if we go designed bid build, we've been talking about a September 2022 school opening. And even with designed bid build, you could, you know, you probably could finish it about six months before that September 22, 2022 time period, but you wouldn't, unlike the Sherwood Middle School, when we moved in mid-year, it wouldn't be practical to move into this school mid-year. So when you miss the, if you missed the September 2021 date by about six months, that doesn't do you any good. You have to wait a whole nother academic year to get into the building. So, you know, if we go designed bid build, I would probably, you know, suggest targeting a September 2022 building opening. If you go CM at risk, we have potential to improve upon that schedule, because with CM at risk, you're allowed to do early packages. And if this, if the design work is done, if the majority of the design work is done towards the fall of 2019, even while the remaining final pieces of the design are being completed, you could bid out this, a CM firm could bid out the site work and start excavating and putting in building footings before the winter. And then over the winter, the structural steel could be fabricated, so when the spring breaks, you could already have your foundations in place, and your steel fabricated, and get a good jumpstart. That kind of early packages that helps you pick up a couple months are not really feasible with the designed bid build method.
Yeah, unlike Sherwood, though, you were moving a group of children 100 yards.
Yeah.
This is a logistical, I won't say challenge, I won't say nightmare, but the logistics of this building and how it will ripple through the system tell me, I'm in no hurry. I want to give the superintendent and his crew time to have this, so she opens on the September and goes.
Yeah.
I could-- I could be wrong, but that's my initial reaction to that.
Exactly. So that's why we, we were saying, the only advantage would be you could get in there in the September before, one year earlier is possible with the, you know, right CM. Whereas it's more probable for the twenty, September twenty twenty-two start with the design bid build.
Okay, any other questions on this?
If not, I would like, personally, I'd like to think about it and then take the vote on Tuesday evening, unless someone's going to be in Tahiti on Tuesday. Okay, great.
Is it any further analysis or that you, I hate to ask you to give me any more homework.
I think you've given us a full, a full pitch.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is great.
Okay, so it appears now that we'll move to the report from the architect. Pretty much.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions regarding the preferred schematic report?
Comments?
So we would request a formal approval of that. That would be.
Is there any reference to it other than a motion to submit the preferred schematic report A for Glavin?
You approved the, the option last time?
Now, that was in spirit so Sandy could go. We all square with that now?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll, we, do you want us to, I assume you need something.
Yes.
Attested from Val, so what do you want?
When we came back Thursday, I'm sorry, I thought when we came back Thursday, you guys did officially vote through the option, correct?
Yes.
Yes, but then we, but we hadn't seen the final report.
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
Right, so this is to approve the preferred schematic report as submitted to the building committee. And that would include, just as an aside, that will include the fact that you selected option A at Glavin site as the preferred schematic.
And a lead.
And the lead.
Great.
Exactly.
Everyone clear on the motion? Mr. Masseyola, do you want to make it?
I move that we recommend approval of option A at the Glavin site as the submittal to the MSBA has been presented to us. And I also move that we conform with the lead standards.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. We already dealt with four D. Anything else?
And I don't think we have any other updates. We've got all of our site required, so we're ready to move into schematic design.
Okay. Then I think we'll just note that we're meeting at six o'clock on Tuesday evening, which time we can further review the method of engagement. There's nothing else particularly noteworthy on that agenda, correct?
Are we, is that also a selectmen's meeting after that?
Yes, then we'll go in for that.
If we want to, is pre-discussed anything on?
Well, I'm going to go through the submittal and hone it a little bit for, for next Tuesday evening. I suspect my colleagues will be interested in the factors that take the rate of reimbursement, reimbursement, when it goes up to fifty-two and then what happens over, and the various types of expenses, what are subject to reimbursement and what outside of. So I, you had done a previous sheet on that. That was very helpful and valuable information.
And we've, we've started to assemble as some similar project data to show a number of different communities with similar types of school, what their reimbursement rate is based, applied to eligible costs, and what their effective reimbursement after you factor in unreimbursed costs, what the end of the day, what the, what their participation rate is from the MSBA.
If you could send that all to Kevin so that he can ensure it gets dispersed.
Yeah.
Appropriately.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come before us, or a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion made in seconded. Do we have a second?
Second.
Sandy second. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you all very much. See you Tuesday.